Welcome to the October 22 regular session of the Joplin Schools Board of Education. Pat, can we have a roll call please?
Dr. Joseph.
Present.
Derek Vander.
Present.
Lori Mastar here.
Dr. Ford.
Present.
Brent Jordan.
Present.
Deborah Bull.
Here.
Sherrod Termon.
Here. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. Let us pretend that we have some other words. The pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Yeah, thank you everyone. That brings us to our approval of our agenda. Anybody have any changes to make to the agenda? There being none, I'd ask for a motion.
So moved.
Thank you Derek, it's been moved. We have a second.
Second.
Thank you doctor, it's been moved and seconded that we approve the agenda as presented. Please vote.
Yes.
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 Yes. Presidents celebrations, we're fortunate to have some things to celebrate this evening. Bus Driver Appreciation Week and National School Bus Safety Week is October 21st through 25th, that's this week folks. Joplin Schools Transportation Department does an outstanding job of keeping our students safe every day as they travel to and from school. This morning principals prepared breakfast for the transportation team to show their appreciation. Some highlights of the department's work during the last year includes bus camp, state safety inspection, purchase of new buses, and system-wide radios.
Awesome job.
Native American Assembly at North Middle School, you can see this beautiful lady on the left with that great garb, really neat looking. Eighth grade students at North Middle School took part in their first history experience day of the year. Kalisha Bertram and her three daughters gave a presentation explaining the traditions of their Ottawa tribe. Students had an opportunity to observe artifacts and take part in native dances. I hope that I pronounced Kalisha's name correctly. Next, we have the Joplin High School Homecoming Parade. The first Joplin High School homecoming parade in over 30 years was a great event for students, staff, and our community. For those of us who attended, that was an absolutely spectacular event. I congratulate Dr. Gilbreth on recommending that we get back to that event. I was humbled to walk with our foundation in that parade. If I had any brains and sense at all, I would have asked our school district, our school board members to participate and walk in the parade. It was absolutely fantastic and what a celebration that day was. I have one more celebration that I left in the car and I apologize, but as people may know, our football team continues to be undefeated. And what impresses me most is I was reading the student athletes quotes after the game and they mentioned things about having pride in being members of the team, that some of our really celebrated athletes always were giving credit to their team members for making holes for them to run through for the... It's not a me team and success comes when we all work together and that's something that we can take from our student athletes on this board and I congratulate them on their humble success.
Absolutely.
So that takes us to the Board of, the BOE Policy Committee. Brett, do you have, Brent, do you have anything?
Well, we were, neither were in attendance at this meeting.
You were not?
We were not.
Brent, where were you? No, that's all right.
I liked to go to a ballgame of my sons. I, it was a tough decision, it really was, Dr. Moss pushed me in that direction and I just, I did it, so.
Well, if it pleases the board, I can share a little bit from the committee because we did go ahead and meet and we are going to have another policy committee meeting. We set the date and time for November 6th at 4:00 PM, so we can make note of that. And we discussed, and the ones that we're bringing forward to you tonight, you have in your board packet and have reviewed those in first reading and they'll be toward the end of our agenda. But we had a good meeting and we have some others that we're still vetting through and we'll have more to look at on November 6th because this is the time of year that a lot of updates are coming to us from Missouri School Boards Association.
Thank you doctor. That moves us to our data analysis committee. That's Lori or Dr. Ford.
I'll take that one. So, we met last week, was it Sarah?
Yes, last week.
And we went over a huge packet of data on how our school district is doing. It was very positive and it was very informative, but four of the main things that came out of that that we wanted to focus on or that we see as highlights is that we exceed in growing our individual students academically year to year. So that's a good thing, that's what we're here for, that's what we want. We're on track for successful post-secondary placement, which is another thing that we want. We want our students to be successful outside of high school, whether they go to college, join the military, or get a career. We continue to work with students to reach their graduation requirements beyond the traditional four-year program. So we're allowing students to go a little bit beyond just the regular four-year program in order to graduate, which is a wonderful thing. And we continue to meet our attendance expectations with 90% of students attending school at least 90% of the time, which, you know, we need to have them here, so that's great. The principals were at the meeting and a couple of things that they shared that they were really excited about was the growth of the students that we're seeing from year to year, the growth that they're making academically because that will bleed over into our proficiency ratings. And as we continue to grow our students, our proficiency ratings will grow up, or go up. And they were also excited about all the work that's being done with curriculum and that we're finally getting, you know, that curriculum in place that they need in order to get everyone moving in the same direction. So, it was a good meeting. Did I leave out anything, Sarah?
You did a great job. Thank you.
Lori, that was a fantastic report. I would also mention that in the newspaper recently, some of our MAPS scores were published and we see that we still have work to do. On behalf of the board, we recognize that and we're doing our best to address that issue. We ask the public support in that. I'm asking for parents, teachers, students, everybody to work together to help bring up our grades and our score.
One thing I'd like to add to that, Sherrod, I'm not making excuses, but for the last three years, 17, 18, and 19, our students have not had the same type of test. They've changed every year.
Exactly.
So, we need to, you know, once that gets consistent, we will see a difference, I think.
It's fantastic. And I am not being critical, but I am trying to be transparent.
Yeah.
So, that takes us to safety and security. That was, we had another fantastic meeting. I'm on that committee as well as Lori and Dr. Ford. It's interesting that we had a conflict that night when we met. The data group was meeting at the same time that we were. I did not bring the notes that I was provided for that meeting and I will defer to Dr. Saketa. Do you have?
I haven't.
Dr. Ford, please.
To the use of technology and Dr. Saketa, so.
Yes, fantastic.
Updates on capital outlay projects regarding abatement, curb, parking lots are progressing as expected. A safety and security audit is getting ready to come up. Jim Houncho explained how that audit works, the process, and a committee member expressed her appreciation for our focus on safety. The other, another one was the alert and notification system that we use on our phones. We've been using lockdown. We decided to continue with lockdown in all buildings except South is going to go ahead and pilot an app called Building Safe and then we'll make a determination next year what to do across the district. And then the last one, I'd like you to speak to Sherrod, is the foundation's work to provide security cameras at all, all of our buildings. So if you could update, I know you're on that committee.
Thank you Deb. So the Joplin Schools Foundation, which I'm a liaison to, I'm not an active member of that group, we have a terrific foundation group and they have successfully raised to date about $130,000 or thereabouts towards our school camera campaign. And so I want to thank them again for the work that they've performed in getting those, that campaign, that capital fund campaign up to where it is as a result of where it stands. Dr. Saketa has, is going to move forward with requests for quote, for the cameras to be put, to provide additional security for our students throughout the district. I don't know if there's anything else that you would like to provide on that, Dr. Saketa? They did have a couple additional potential donors that they were going to talk to, but most of that pledge drive is completed and we would call it highly successful and we're very appreciative.
That's it. We should have a little bit more information on our RFPs by the end of this week and then hopefully following next week, we'll be ready to put it out so we can get maybe four or five really good, high-quality bidders to look at what we have and then give us a price that's fair and competitive and then we can get a good quality product into the schools.
Thank you doctor. That takes us to our superintendent state report.
Health and dental plan update, Dr. Langford.
We've been indicating to you, or last month we indicated that you would see health, our health reserves be struggling a little bit compared to what we've been seeing. We've been through a period of time where we've had ongoing growth and this is attributable to the fact that we've had a couple of, two or three fairly large claims, one very large claim. And as a result, we have encumbered the expense, which if you look at the balance that we have, or if you look at the expenses we had year-to-date, a year ago, $1.3 million at this point. Today, it's $2.77.
Wow.
And if you would take that one major claim off, it wouldn't, it wouldn't take it away, but it would close the gap significantly and consider that it's not just one claim, there have been some major claims. And as a result, we have a dip in our fund balance from a year ago, $5.5 million, to the current status of $4.2 million. Now, we are expecting a check in excess of $600,000 from reinsurance because of the major claim that I have referenced there. When we look at the particular, the last, it seems like we've kind of leveled back to a normal claims rate in the last couple of payments. One thing that we have noticed is the pharmacy costs are significantly, carry a good bit of cost with them and there are some extremely high pharmacy prescriptions that are being covered by the plan. But having said that, you go through good times and bad times. The purpose for the reserve is to deal with the bad times and if we can find some stabilization in our health plan, we're not overly alarmed at where we're sitting right now. And then again, the detail that you have kind of gives you a snapshot review of all of the current fund balances, current expenditures, and we put it where you can compare back to the prior year where we were each of the things, whether it's reserves or the revenue coming in or the expenses going out. So I think that all the detailed information that would support what I've just told you has been provided. We're hopeful that maybe we'll see the fund balance next month look a little bit better. Can't promise you that because we don't have a check yet. Be glad to answer any questions you have.
Thank you, Dr. Langford. Does anybody have any questions for Dr. Langford concerning our health and dental plan status?
Moving on to financial statements.
As you recall, a couple of months ago, we were a little concerned because some of the expenditures have, were up compared to a year ago, especially in fund capital projects. If you would take a look at the sheet that is a comparison that we created two years ago for you to really look at, and I think it'll be the next one coming up, where we give you the comparative data for the revenue and for the expenses. So if we look at our revenue, we know that our state funding will be down again because we got SEMA money last year. We also got a one-time appropriation, so state will not hit last year because there was some one-time funding that was there. It seems like the local revenue is up compared to this time last year. County is just pretty well, as we knew it would be, on par. And the federal is very, very close to where we were last year. So overall, the revenue picture is running as projected again, warning, or for reminding you, I should say, that the state revenue will be down this year and we never expected it to be equal to last year because of the one-time money. When we go to the expenditure side, we've seen a leveling out and actually we are in good shape. The incidental fund is higher in expenditures than a year ago, but remembering we had our insurance premium that we used to pay monthly, it was all paid in the month of July. And then we did have salary increases for support staff, so that pretty well justifies or explains why we're running $600,000 ahead of where we were this time last year. And the insurance is the biggest contributor to that. The teacher's fund, or the fund two, if you look at that, we're just right on course now that we're kind of seeing a leveling out, but as far as the expenditures are concerned, we see about a $50,000 difference and if you project out over the next year because of the salary increases that were granted this year, that pretty well takes care of it, explains that. Debt services, it defines itself, and capital projects is now actually less than it was this time last year. So what I'd indicated to you a couple of months ago, we had some major projects that came, were completed quickly, that's why the expenses were high, they've leveled out. So this is, I think, a good financial statement for you.
Thank you, Dr. Langford. Does anybody have any questions of Dr. Langford concerning the financial statement?
Lori? Do we, what is our reserve percentage?
Thirty-seven percent.
What was it?
Thirty-seven.
Awesome, thank you.
That's as of June 30th.
Really good. That's healthy.
Any other questions? Do we have any public comments this evening, Pat?
No.
Thank you ma'am. Do we have our consent agenda? Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Thank you Derek, it's been moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you Mike. It's been moved and seconded that we approve our consent agenda as presented. Please vote.
Yes.
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 Yes. Yes.
Yes. Takes us to our regular agenda, resolution directed prepayment of the district's outstanding certificates of participation. Joplin Schools, Joplin, Missouri, Series 2017, exercising the district's option to purchase certain facilities leased to the district upon prepayment of the Series 2017 certificates. That's an action item for Dr. Langford.
If we really went into all the detail, we could probably talk two hours about that. I've been, I was on the phone as late as 5:00 today and then talking with the Bank of America. But in trying to develop funding for, to bridge the gap because the FEMA funds were not in and we would not get the state money, one of the things that was done in June of 2017 was to enter into a $14 million, $50,000, I believe, participation loan or lease purchase, whatever you call it. And the provision in that, it was done with Bank of America, it was done at a favorable rate, 2.96 is what we paid. And the provision was for them to get into it, well, they need, you know, anybody that's going to finance has to have some certainty. It was a 10-year, with the understanding that we had to pay and there was a payment schedule, which we've been making principal and interest payments, so that $14 million is down, down to $11 million, $550,000. So we've made principal payments the last two years and we've made our interest payments. And actually, again, this goes back to the agreement we had on the cell towers and through that process, Kerry came down and said, you know, Bank of America said they would let us call those bonds. Now, there's a stack of materials that thick and I will tell you, I did not read all of those. But I was always of the impression we could not call them before June 1st, 2020 and only if we called in total, we had to take them all out. We couldn't just say, well, we're going to buy a million. And actually, the provision to do that was not there, but it was Bank of America deciding that they would offer that up, but we paid 35 basis points of premium. They get a little bit, not all of it. And my only thing that I can determine why it's in their best interest, as you know, we've seen two Fed funds rates drops in the past six months and they're speculating if they wait until June, that could drop another time or two, so if they had the money sooner to get it invested is probably better for them, you know, or why else would they do that? And so because of Kerry making me aware and we got in conversation with him and then Kerry kind of, you know, basically we have been dealing with that since then, but we talked to the Bank of America person in Oklahoma City and they don't care about anything but just getting the money based on the premium points and what have you. But the caveat was... But the caveat was, you know, the Securities and Exchange Commission, and when you set these things up, it's really, and it's in the best interest of the public, I'm not critical of it all, but there was no provision for this to be done. And so, we had to go through a process with them to redo documents, to get the board to authorize the action to prematurity, or the, actually, you're directing us to recall those early, and we would then, on November the 8th, that's when our bonds, investments mature, those monies become available, and by the way, we would lose 60, if, if that were today, we don't know what the rate will be on November the 8th, but if it were today, we've lost 63 points in our, and that's quite a bit of money when you're talking about 11 million dollars, you know, for a period of time. So what we're doing tonight is you're directing us to recall those bonds, and this has all been done, the legal folks with the, with US Bank, who, they are the trustee for this, so we pay them, and then they pay Bank of America, and since it's been, since it's being done prior to what the document said it could be done, it takes a legal process to get it done. So that's what we're asking you to do. We believe, based on calculations that I've done, and it can't be accurate because, again, we don't know what the rates will be, I don't think they're going up, they, they went down last week, they've continued to go down, but we believe that we will make, it will benefit or reduce the payment. If you look at the document, it's like 100 and some thousand dollars less we're paying, but we're earning some interest, so you back that for what we would have earned out. But we think somewhere in the vicinity of $40,000, we will not have to pay any interest, so why sit on the money if we can, you know, save $40,000? So that's what this is all about.
Thank you, Dr. Langford. Does anybody have any questions of Dr. Langford concerning regular agenda item G1? I'd entertain a motion.
So moved.
Derek, it's been moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mike. It's been moved and seconded. We approve agenda item G1. Please vote.
Yes.
Yes, yes.
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 Yes, thank you for making us some money this evening, Dr. Langford.
Well, we saved us some money, and that's just like making it.
Same thing. That moves us to item two, a resolution in support of Jasper County joining Freedoms Frontier National Heritage Area Incorporated.
I was approached by entities that are interested in making Freedoms Frontier National Heritage Area include the Sherwood Radar Farm Civil War Park area. Basically, the FFNHA is affiliated with the National Park Service. They are about a 31,000 square acre, or square miles region that includes eastern Kansas and western Missouri, and they're about to go before Congress in 2021 for reauthorization, and that opens the window for them to add this property. And I did find out that our Jasper County Commissioners, as well as last night, when I was at the city council meeting, they have also voted to support this resolution that you have included in your board packet. So it allows them then to be eligible for certain grant loans and things that could enhance that area and educate people about the civil war skirmishes that took place in the area. So administration recommends the board approve the resolution in support of Jasper County joining Freedoms Frontier National Heritage Area Incorporated.
Thank you, Dr. Moss. We have a motion.
So moved.
Thank you, Derek. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mike. It's been moved and seconded. We approve this recommendation. Please vote.
Yes.
Yes, yes.
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 Yes. Moves us to item three, our accounts payable. Dr. Langford.
Again, you have a complete listing of every bill that was paid in the early part of the month, which are just routine business, and then those we're asking you to approve that will be actually checks mailed out tomorrow. And we just went over the financial report, which indicates we are on track, and so, you know, the thing that I've always found is go through and where were we last year, what was happening last year, and there can always be months where the, there are three payrolls that may have occurred or what have you. But we are asking you to approve these expenditures tonight, that totaled 5.5 million dollars, and you're approving what was paid earlier this month, which were budgeted items, and the, the checks that will be mailed out tomorrow. So 5.5 million dollars would be what you're voting on tonight, but if you compare that to a year ago, it was 6.6 million dollars. So again, there are reasons why, that's ebbs and flows, and bills come in differently, but I'm very comfortable, if you look at the financial report we just had, and the spending that we're asking you to approve compared to a year ago, that we're remaining well within the budget.
Dr. Langford, does anybody have any questions of Dr. Langford concerning our accounts payable? Have a motion to approve?
I'm moving with pair of bills.
A second.
Thank you, Deborah. It's been moved and seconded. We approve payment of our accounts payable. Please vote.
Yes.
Yes, yes.
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 Yes. That moves us to purchase 33 laptops for FTC respiratory care programs. Dr. Moss.
Yeah, so we have Penny with us tonight, if the board has questions, but they're seeking to purchase their laptops for our respiratory care program, and some of the funds will be coming from enhancement rest, grant dollars and general operational funds for the remaining balance, so no local tax dollars pay for adult Franklin Tech Center expenses. We recommend the board approve the request to purchase 33 new student laptops to support and strengthen program learning goals and objectives for our respiratory care program.
Ms. Penny, what is the percentage of job, job placement on this particular program?
For respiratory?
Yes.
Hundred percent.
What was that?
Hundred percent.
Can you get any improvement on that?
That's not getting that.
We try our best.
Lori, recruits!
My gosh, 100% job placement rate. Pretty tough to beat that.
Well, and we have to add a little bit more respiratory care spent to their reaccreditation process with their national accrediting body, COAR, and the accrediting body could not find one area to recommend for improvement.
Awesome.
Yeah, I saw that.
That never, that never happens, so they have been approved at some of the meetings left early, and they are now reaccredited for another 10 years.
What a gym we have in Franklin Technology Center.
I would move that we purchase 33 new Dell computers at the price of $22,275.
I'll second that motion.
Thank you, Brent. Thank you, Derek. It's been moved and seconded. We approve this purchase. Please vote.
Yes.
Yes, yes.
Yes.
Yes. Moving next to the endpoint protection antivirus software. Dr. Secetta?
We have two different action items, and I want Eric to be able to tell you a little bit more in detail about the difference, but, because they do somewhat similar type functions, but in what we're always trying to do with data security and potentially stave off data breaches every single day, every hour of the day, we feel like these two products are necessary. And Vince is here as well.
Yep. The first one is, of course, the endpoint protection, which goes on our servers and our clients, and the, the current one we have didn't really work well with our servers, and it took up a lot of resources, and we had complications with our servers. But we're looking to actually beef up the kind of security we're putting on our endpoint clients and the servers, and that's to include intrusion prevention software also. So not only are we going to be sitting there trying to detect it, they're going to try to see if there's anybody trying to actually get in and lay dormant within our system. And the reporting systems that come with Bit Defender are a lot more in-depth than the previous antivirus software that we were using, so.
Thank you, Eric. Does anybody have any questions of these gentlemen for this? This is a three-year license, it's within your operational fund budget.
Yeah, we were really shocked at what Bit Defender came in at, because they're, they're one of the top companies out there.
Well, cybersecurity and all those issues are just paramount in our community right now, and that's something that we'll be fighting for the foreseeable future.
Unfortunately, actually, not to say it's not if, it's when.
Yeah, it's terrible. It's amazing, some of our competing countries employ their best to break into our cyber networks, and it's just terrible that we've got to defend it like this. Do we have a motion to approve this expenditure?
So moved.
Thank you, Derek. Is there a second?
A second.
Thank you, Brent. It's been moved and seconded. We approve the purchase of Bit Defender suite for $39,095 for a three-year lease. Please vote.
Yes.
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 Yes. Thank you both for being here this evening. That takes us to, I think you are probably going to stay there.
They're going to do the next one.
Yeah, Fortnet, Fortinet, excuse me, license extension with added intrusion detection.
That's, that's our current firewall system, and again, we're looking to beef it up a little bit by adding the intrusion prevention software suite on there also. And Vince knows more about the actual workings of that, so if you have any questions.
Vince needs to say something, he can't come all the way. This is so much fun, right?
It is.
Good lay terms, Vince.
Yeah. Looks like the annual renewal is $22,587.63, again, from the operational budget. It's, it's budgeted within the operational funds. Does anybody have any questions for these gentlemen? Are you going to make a motion, Deb?
I'd like to make a motion that we approve Fortnight.
I'll say it.
Because it's got my name in it.
Motion by Dr. Ford and seconded by Lori. For the approval of this purchase, please vote.
Yes.
Yes, yes.
Yes.
Yes, thank you both for being here.
Thank you, gentlemen. I thought you said Fortnite when I first looked over.
I thought I said that.
Why are we buying games?
And you did have those included in their entirety in your board packet, and as you can see on your agenda, different people have certain expertise in those areas.
Or anyone else, Ms. Wongi is also on here. Any, any of these folks for these first policy reading? I'd accept a motion to approve.
So moved.
Thank you, Derek.
A second.
Thank you, Deborah. It's been moved and seconded. We approve these policy updates for each read. Please vote.
Yes.
Yes, yes.
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 Yes. Brings us to our plus deltas. Dr. Moss.
Oh, I just want to reiterate how great it was that our principals got together and recognized our bus and other transportation personnel this morning, and they cooked breakfast, we had numerous expressions of appreciation, they even had posters that I think some of the kids had made, and it was, it was very a special treat to get to recognize our transportation department in that way.
That's cool. I would like to publicly thank the foundation for all they do.
Yes.
For our schools, our students, our teachers, our staff, and thanks to everyone who went to Chick-fil-A to support the foundation.
So I don't have any deltas. Anybody got any deltas? Anybody want to be negative tonight?
I too wish we would have had a float of some sort, or at least a gathering at the parade.
That was my mistake. I gotta tell you that I had, I'm all about being transparent, it's a big deal to me, and I had low aspirations for the homecoming parade. I, I went there thinking, oh geez, I'm going to walk down Main Street for four blocks, I'm going to feel silly, and I was overcome by how fantastic it was. I mean, it was just, it was fun, you know? Joplin showed up. I think anytime you throw candy at kids or hand candy to kids, maybe people want to show up, but it was delightful. I don't know what else to call it. It was short, it was fun, it was a celebration of just being us, and I like that. And we should have been a part of that, and I apologize.
And there's shout-out to...
Yeah, there's next year, hopefully. I mean, if we do it again, I don't, it's going to be hard to beat that one. I mean, you know, that's really something, I think it was a manageable parade, if there is such a thing, and I just had no idea that we should have had a group be in it, we weren't asked to be a part of it. If I had any foresight, I would have recognized, I should have said, hey, guys, why don't we, we get in the back of the pickup truck and ride down Main Street together? Or, yeah, they probably would have booed us.
Well, I tell you, isn't a sway, this is your guilt.
Yeah.
Any at all. I am aware, and I can't quote exact figures, I know Dr. Gilbert said if he were here, but because of the footprint of the parade, and we appreciate the city's cooperation in letting us do that, we had more requests for entries to, to be in the parade than we were allowed to accommodate.
Wow.
That's great.
So, so we had more people wanting to put parade, or floats in, and it came together in a relatively short amount of time. So I think if, we talk a lot about Plan Do Study Act in our strategic plan, and we're doing that with the parade as well. It's going to be even better next year.
How many floats did they allow?
Entries included various sports teams, the swim team was in their swimsuits in the back of the pickup truck.
With water.
With water, they had a rubber lining around it. It was hilarious. The volleyball team was on the top of a fire truck, the Constitution team had an appearance, our drama groups made, made an appearance. Our football team was at the end, being pulled by a couple semi-tractor trailers. It was absolutely terrific, and should note that our, the very first Joplin Homecoming Queen, and the last Homecoming Queen prior to the Homecoming game, shared a car, and both of those ladies are fantastic people, so we have a lot to be proud of.
I would like to acknowledge Dr. Gilbert's leadership in that.
Yes.
He also walked the Maple Leaf Parade and stayed the entire day for the band shows, so.
Fantastic.
Yep.
Hooray for Dr. Gilbert. I really, it's just, it was just, it was so far above what anybody might have expected. There were, it was a nice evening, which helped, and again, Joplin was in attendance, which made it that much more fun when we all get together as a community, and that's, it was all about community.
There are some wonderful pictures out. The J. Hesker Book staff have some on their Flickr stream. I can show you where that's at if you're interested. If you were not able to attend, there's some great photos out there, but I, some of the comments that I had received was folks were so proud about being part of our community and how the community came out to support that.
Yeah, and I missed several entries. I was just kind of giving you a flavor of who all was in it, but there were just, there's a lot of groups at our high school, and they, many would have been represented, and I can't name them all, just, they just did a great job.
That's awesome.
Kudos.
Would you entertain a motion to adjourn? Yes, sir. Is that you, buddy?
Yes, sir.
And is there a second?
A second.
It's hard to want, we don't want to leave, do we, Lori?
I was looking at Brent. You just going to sit there?
I would...
Early meeting.
When you're in the moment.[1772.13]